Yeah.
I'm optimistic.
Yes. Skill robbery would need today.
All right, it is seven oh one. Knocky, 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 guys. All right, seven oh one, we are going to call this September fifth, twenty twenty four Village Board Meeting to Order. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. I pledge allegiance under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. If the clerk could call the roll, please.
Trustee Ibarra, here. Trustee Frank, here. Trustee Abeglin, here. President Urki, here. Trustee Doorward, here. Trustee Bart, here. Trustee Mindy.
President.
All right, hearing that we have a quorum, I will move on. The next section is going to be for public comments. Please note, public comments are limited to five minutes per person. And it's for anything really that's not on the agenda that won't be talking or that we won't be talking about in open session. Again, I know that we're going to have one, we're going to have at least one open or, you know, comment tonight. I do want to remind the board that it's just an opportunity for the individual to talk to us and explain to us things. And it's not meant to be a back and forth necessarily. So I would love to have anybody that has anything that's not on the agenda, please come on up, state your name, and.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Sure. Sure. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brad German. I have lived in the village for twelve years. I am here to inform the board of a situation that has caused my family to watch stress and anxiety for almost fifty-five days. On July tenth, we received a fence violation from the village that came to us by surprise as we don't have a fence or anything. We have banners that are attached to a place that are not mounted in the ground but are set in planters. One of these banners has been up for almost a year prior to receiving this violation. The violation was very vague and contained no pictures or descriptions of what the actual violation was. I called the number on the letter provided by Mr. Jenkins who issued the violation. And that number led to Melworth Village and not the village of Freedonia. After looking at Mr. Jenkins' number and having a conversation with him, he could not explain to us why I was receiving a fence and that it just needed to come down. We asked for a meeting and were met with, sure, we can have a meeting, but it's not going to change the outcome of the violation. We were told to apply for a fence permit, which we denied, and then again, apply it during a people's board meeting, which also would most likely get denied. The letter itself stated that the village attorney, building inspector, and Mr. Jenkins confirmed that we had a violation. On July twenty ninth, we then reached out to the building inspector himself, Mr. John Gerler, to see how and why this conclusion was made about our fence. To our surprise, Mr. Gerler had not heard of this issue, seen the alleged violation, or confirmed that we indeed had a violation. He stated that the issue was between us and the administrator, Mr. Jenkins. After forty-five days no good of the violation, on August thirtieth, we decided to bring the issue to the board. At the courtesy, we decided to contact the village president last night, Mr. Gerler, to inform him of the issue of how we felt Mr. Jenkins felt with this issue. We did this as a courtesy just to let him know ahead of time. This morning, Mr. Gerler showed up at my home to finally inspect the violation at hand. After inspecting the alleged violation, it was determined that there was in fact no violation in my property. Mr. Gerler took this information back to the village hall and informed Mr. Jenkins of his decision. We then received a letter from Mr. Jenkins today stating in fact he did not have a fence and there is no longer a violation. So it brings me to this. Why did Mr. Jenkins send me a confirmed violation notice prior to the alleged complaint being fully inspected in my property? The unneeded stress and anxiety this caused my family for fifty-five days for no reason cannot be addressed by words. How this complaint and violation was handled by the village administrator is very concerning and we felt is very imperative to bring this before the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. I appreciate you coming in. All right. Are there any other public comments? On anything tonight? All right, if not, we're going to move on. Uh, the next item is going to be the Consent Agenda, which consists of approving the minutes of August fifteenth, twenty twenty four Village Board Meeting and August twenty second. Remember, we had that special board meeting approving general fund, water, and sewer invoices, and there are no additional bills. All right, I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions, concerns? And I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll move on to report on village committees, and the first one will be the Zoning Board of Appeals. I will turn to our village clerk.
You want me to do that or you Chris or?
If you want, go.
Okay, so Mr. Dimmer, um, I can't remember the address. He applied for, he's on a corner lot and he applied for shed permit. Um, because he is in a corner lot, um, he technically has no rear yard. And, um, his permit for a shed was denied. He appealed that decision. Um, the ZBA heard his, uh, testimony, um, and they found in favor of Mr. Dimmer's request for variance. Um, so he is allowed to build his shed now in the side yard.
No, good summary. Sounds pretty much it. All right. Any questions for our village clerk? All right, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to the Finance Committee, and I'll turn to trustee Abeglin for the recap on that.
Uh, basically, this is just our, our annual first time to get together to go to the CIP and, uh, you know, other. It's kind of over the budget to be put together. So, uh, Chris went over the proposed plan for twenty-five. And, uh, we made some adjustments to, uh, some of the planning due to, uh, you know, just different, uh, costs, you know, than expected. And just played out a, a plan as we can discuss it later on tonight. Add it, add whatever else you'd like.
I think we'll be covering the rest later on the agenda. Be great.
Excellent. Thank you for that recap. And do we have any comments or questions for trustee Abeglin?
Yeah, there's a mistake in the minutes. Um, right before the motion, a little paragraph, I suggested that, uh, when I would be having a rural profile rather than a actual curve guard.
That in the.
An urban.
Instead of urban.
Is that in the finance minutes?
Yeah, in a finance minute.
So when those, so those are draft minutes, and when they come before the Finance Committee, um, at that meeting, that change can be made. Um, yeah, I'll flag it.
Yeah, we, we can make that edit up before you bring it to finance again.
All right. Thank you, Don. Appreciate that. Any other questions? Not, we will move on, on to the Joint Paramedic Committee, and I don't know which one of you is planning on taking that either Kurt or Don or Chris or anyone.
Um, Don, you can go ahead.
Um, we went through. The proposals by the town of. Freedonia to, uh, remove part of their increments from helping as. As their, as part of their, uh, share of, of paying bill, um, as well as, uh, and, um, initiatives that they use. That they use, uh. Money that earns from the paramedics to help pay down the, uh, reimbursement that is due and, um. They instructed that that be added to the. Added to that, uh, attorney had that in or write that in when he revises the minutes along with a few other little changes. Um, I mentioned that I was, uh, against both of those. And, uh, I was the only one, so it's, it's going to be put in the minutes or in the, in the ordinance to present. Anything else?
Uh, yeah, no, I, I, I can't recall too much more else. I was just fine tuning on the language so that. You know, town of Freedonia, uh, was satisfied with it.
So next step, steps, just so I can update everybody, we have another meeting scheduled where hopefully a final draft will get brought to us. Um, our attorney, our village's attorney is the one that's working on that, and so it'll get brought back for one more look, and then hopefully you guys will all see that final draft as well.
Right. Any other questions on the Joint Paramedic Committee meeting? All right, if not, then we are going to move on to items for discussion and/or action. The first is the discussion and possible action on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four, all terrain vehicles and utility terrain vehicles, uh, in the village of Freedonia. I will remind, well, two things, I will remind the board that this is more of a workshop situation where we're going to be bouncing ideas back and forth. Uh, what we think about the ordinance as presented, that as was, you know, presented in our packet, uh, any changes that we would want to, to make. There's a lot of information, um, in here, including some numbers from our village marshal, um, some opinions that he has, that's on page ninety. Eighty-nine and ninety of your packet. Um, there's a traffic study that was done, and then. Um, also a bunch of information, I think we've seen this before, from the ATV club, their, their packet on the ordinance that they suggest, and then all the information regarding signage and. Um, some state statutes and things like that. So. What I would request is, again, this is good to be more of kind of a working, um, workshop for us to take a look through this and propose any changes to, to the ordinance as, uh, it is presented before you. And then at, at that time, uh, we would move forward, forward with making those changes, and then a vote, I believe, would be on the next.
On the nineteenth.
On the nineteenth, on the next village board meeting. So I will open it up, um, to the board. Again, not really meant to be too much of a back and forth, but if there are any questions that we have, we can certainly, certainly talk about.
I thought I remember seeing something in here about insurance. Is that being added? To our ordinances, or is that just something that, that we're counting on them?
So as.
As, as a, uh, club to, to do that.
So as is right now, the ordinance that you see before you is pretty boilerplate. So any things as far as like driver's licenses, insurance requirements, a lot of that stuff that we've talked about is not currently in there. But that's the guidance we're looking for tonight, if you would like it to be added to our.
Oh, okay.
Um, I'd say keep in mind too, you know, one of the discussions we had la- the last time we met on this item or this issue was. We don't necessarily, I think on, at the board level, we talked about not wanting to put something in our ordinance that we couldn't enforce, correct? Puts us in kind of a sticky situation, so, um. You know, maybe that's just, should be something to consider.
Is there any drawbacks to not including? Driver's licenses on there or, or, uh, insurance? I mean. I, I mean, I guess, I mean, from what I've been hearing from the club, that everybody's pretty responsible, but I guess we're, we're kind of. Trying to prevent that lone wolf from coming in and, uh, you know, being reckless and then ruining it for everybody else, so, but. I mean, I don't know, I don't have any feelings. Either way, requiring driver's licenses or was the marshal, did the marshal want, uh, driver's license?
So again, it's not a matter of what we want or not, it's what's enforceable, and that that was the crux of what a lot of our conversation was at the last meeting.
Well, yeah, if you didn't feel it was enforceable, then he probably wouldn't want it in there.
Well, and I don't, Mr. President, I think you had, you had chatted with Marshall Lead a little bit more about that, right, conversations with Woodward, I, and I had walked in at the end of that conversation. Did he share with you any new information about how he could enforce different things? That was just the other day, and I don't mean to call you on the spot, but. I didn't know if he learned anything new that I, I didn't know about.
Um.
It's okay.
Not that I recall.
Stick it out.
The last two weeks have been such a blur, I don't even remember meetings, so, um.
Touch base with that pretty well.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Um, he said that. We're not writing state citations, we're writing ordinance violations. And it would be a, a ticket that would be handled by, um, in our municipal, uh, court. And, um, he doubted very much whether to go any farther than that, and if it would be, we would be the ones that would take it farther to appeal, which we wouldn't do. Um, and if they lost, uh, and they wanted to go forward, we just asked the court to dismiss the charge.
Yeah.
The citation. Um, so that would, uh, it's more of a deterrent thing.
Mm-hmm.
And if that's going to closer resemble most of the other ordinances in the area, which I believe it will, similar, um, that would, uh. That would probably be the way to do it. I wouldn't want to load it up with every little thing that we want, but some of the important ones, I think, should be in there.
Mm-hmm. I know some, one of the things we had talked about was the, the timing, right? I mean, we're, that we can certainly decide on. I know in this ordinance right here, it says. Eleven to five, yeah. So we can certainly talk about that. Um. And then I believe that the marshal had said some, something in his memo that I was pointing out on page ninety-eight, ninety-nine about, um. Roads and, and, and closing down specific roads and things like that, so invite you to take a look at that, read that. Um, so anybody had any other correspondence from anybody regarding any other citizens, anyone reaching out?
I know there was some concern on social media about, um, insurance liabilities and, and whatnot. If an ATV hits a car. What happens then? You know, kind of questioning some of that. Um, I know there was a little pushback on not requiring insurance. You know, from our citizens that are going to be on ATVs or UTVs within the village, only from a vehicle standpoint. How does that all play out, bud?
Mm-hmm.
I did have someone reach out to me and ask about, would this include, yeah? All parts.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only question.
Right.
This would be completely separate based on the conversations that we've had and previous. Presentations and everything, golf carts falls under a different statute for the state than ATVs and UTVs do.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're not built to be on the road vehicles, and the state recognizes that, so that goes under different setting.
Mm-hmm.
So reading through, uh, I don't know if this is the time, but, or if this is up for discussion, reading through Marshall Lee's questions and comments about. Um, the Armandillo survey and the traffic on Freedonia Avenue.
Yeah, it's a price three hundred thousand.
Uh, it was.
Thirty thousand.
It was a little bit more than I had.
Thirty thousand.
Uh. Think about how many times you drive up and down Freedonia Avenue. I don't like to be at at least ten.
Well, it's, it's twice when I go anywhere, it's twice I do it.
On their back end. So if you're running across town for any reason or enough to go to work or whatever the case is.
I think it lasts me about a month, so I don't.
Um, so my, my, I understand Marshall Lee's. Information that he's provided and all of that, I still struggle with closing down Freedonia Avenue. So we're going to tell. One whole entire road, everybody but you can rent ATV in town. You can't leave your house, you're going to have to trailer it and go somewhere else. That's what I struggle with. If we're going to pass this, or if we're going to look at passing this ordinance, I don't know that you can limit the main thoroughfare in Freedonia.
Well, we can't tell them that they can go up and down Freedonia Avenue. Even in our, we, we don't have the ability to approve them using Freedonia Avenue at all. That's the county's jurisdiction, the county truck highway.
I feel like.
Can I, when I, did I ask Jonathan that exact question? Because at the last meeting, there was some discussion between State Act sixty-seven, eighty-seven, um, yeah, eighty-seven. Um, and whether or not that would allow the village to declare Freedonia Ave a county road, um, a thoroughfare. And the answer is yes, but, so State Act sixty-seven would allow the village to declare Freedonia Ave a thorough, uh, a route. However, the county has a specific ordinance that does not state Freedonia Ave as a route. So if we pass it, including Freedonia Ave, you guys or somebody would have more work to do at the county level to allow, to ask the county to allow. Traffic through Freedonia.
Yeah, it's an easy process. It's like, it's like adding a parking space, particular parking side of the road to our parking ordinance. If we're going to take parking off or move parking on, um, you have to go to the county and request probably to the, uh.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, what? No, no, it's fine. I think this is, no, I think this is an appropriate time, so.
Yeah, it also states that if the county or state road is less than thirty-five miles an hour, looks to the municipality, there's all of that data for help. Um, so as long as Freedonia Avenue is less than thirty-five miles an hour or less, they have control over making that jurisdiction.
So I think what attorney Woodward was saying wasn't necessarily that State Act eighty-seven. Gave us control. It was that we would have a conflicting ordinance with the county, and so how would that be handled?
See, the, the, the county has an ordinance that has. That's each portion of each county truck highway going through each municipality. By, by name on this ordinance. And you need to add Freedonia Avenue to that ordinance, to their list on that ordinance. It's, it's real easy. They're not going to give you any trouble. They're just going to do it.
So something to look into.
Yeah. That is not, so, for example, with the. City of Hartford, every six, absolutely against a thirty-five miles an hour, county cannot even, county doesn't, you know, stay over jurisdiction of the.
That's a difference.
Municipality, county or state, uh, loses that jurisdiction once the speed limit is thirty-five, and it's all.
That's Washington County. That may be how their.
So I'll just. So, so maybe I'll just read Jonathan's email because maybe I missed some points because he mentions Hartford. Um, so the club is mostly correct about Act eighty-seven. It gives the power to municipalities or counties to open those roads. If you looked at the legislative history of the act, it really had to do with municipalities that weren't getting permission from the state DOT to open state highways, like in Hartford where the main drag is through State Highway sixty. The draft ordinance I have prepared would allow Freedonia Ave to be open. So that's the yes portion of the question. The but portion is the county has also passed an ATV UTV ordinance, which provides that no person may operate an ATV or UTV on any Ozaki County highway. Except on those portions of county highways that are designated as ATV and UTV routes pursuant to the code of Ozaki County. If there was no county level ordinance, then the village passing an ordinance to open Freedonia Ave would be all that is required under Act eighty-seven. But here, they have already gone to the county to get a county level ATV ordinance. His draft, my draft, provides that any operation on a county highway also has to be in compliance. With the applicable county ordinance. Otherwise, you would have a weird situation where the village ordinance would not allow the operation, but the county, I'm sorry. Where the village ordinance would allow the county operate, the operation, but the county ordinance would not include that, I'm sorry. In reality, I expect if the village passes its ordinance, the club will have to go to the county to amend their ordinance to include county highways within the village.
So I think what we're, what we're saying is if we decide that we want to open it up to Freedonia Avenue as well, with all due respect. The burden is on you guys to make sure that you go to Ozaki County and make sure that every, we're, we're doing what we need to do in the village. We would expect the club to do, to take that next step, regardless of what needs to happen. If that makes sense.
Ozaki is one of the few, few counties that has an ordinance like that. So I, I would hate for us to, um, if this passes, for you to go running up and down the top kind of trunk and have one of the county courts pull you over and give you a ticket. Because if we pass this ordinance, we allow it because we will allow it also when the county changes their ordinance. So we don't have to go back and change our ordinance. That's why that language is in here. So that is, it's, uh, language is ready to, uh, handle when Ozaki County adds Freedonia Avenue to their list. Within the ordinance by name.
So a question that I have, and this is just, you know, more, more access wise, I know that currently a county highway like we're talking about would be restricted, you know, whatever by the county, unless it's specifically called off. Where does the current trail end in the town? So I'm thinking on the west side, right? You have County Road I. Where does that trail end as you're coming east towards the village? Okay.
It's like a hundred feet west of Fox Glen.
Okay, so I'm saying coming from the west on Freedonia Avenue. Is there any thoroughfare there at all? Yep. So, okay.
Public, I would petition the sheriff and the county board for all through the, sort of, the. And we were all participating so that we could connect, uh, so we didn't even petition.
Hmm.
East of that area.
So my question is, it being a, a thoroughfare from Wabaka and other areas, is your plan to go and ask for that? Or are you planning on just keeping that closed yet? Because that's kind of an interesting jog, right, going up and then coming back down type thing.
In the future, we'd like our, our ultimate goal would be to solve my question until the ball comes.
Okay.
Uh, well, we wanted to start slow, but this was new for us, so we're looking for the latest.
I'm just thinking because, because if that's not, right, you're going to have an influx of traffic that comes.
To head in.
Well, up the Fox Glen, and you're going to have everyone coming through Fox Glen to try to get to Freedonia Avenue, which would not be something that I'm guessing all the residents over there love, some might. But, so that, that would be my next. That's why I mentioned that. Write that down.
If we can, before see, you know, a few problems with this, and it would be nice if we could kill all the birds with one stone and not have to do things over and over again.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you talked to John Andrew and me and, and, okay, um, and they didn't have a problem. Right. So you're, you're looking to come in off of, uh, from the top of the hill where Turner is across, and then come in on Marty. That would be the east-west on the north side.
What would be, uh, remember Freedonia Polar and Javel for, uh, Sierra Valley, Sierra Valley is actually on Freedonia, so it ends right at your village limits right now. And so that would be coming from the north, they could come in on Sierra Valley.
Yeah.
And then Freedonia, Freedonia Polar from the west. So where do you have, which is part of the village, um. If they go, but, but first side, we're leaving Freedonia going to the north. There's like a section from the train tracks from what a substation used to be or where it is, that's actually village park. That's village park, village road. That should probably roll up or, probably roll on both sides, but between fifty-seven and Sierra Valley Road, there's a little stretch in there that actually considers village park, village road.
Well, that's from there to the, to. Oh, that's from there to the, to Martin. And where the houses start down the line.
It's up north, it's Willow Valley, right? Willie Bell, Willow Valley.
Well, yeah, if, uh, if we have jurisdiction over half of the road, then we both have to have, we both have to say yes. So right now you can't use that because only. The more restrictive. Yes. We, we'd like to, to some of those. So do you have, you, you, you can't come in on Fredonia Avenue?
Not right now, it doesn't. That's what I'm saying.
That's forty-five, yeah. Well, I wouldn't mind that going down the thirty-five, telling you the truth. Those cars jump over the hill.
That's another meaning.
Um, so anyway, I mean, that would be my preference again, because the, the main thoroughfare that it would be coming in on being Martin is a very highly residential. Spot. So I would, I would. Say if anything, try to petition to get Fredonia Avenue as something added. I would like to see that, right? That way you've got a clear in and out. And honestly, if we're trying to promote. Use of businesses and things like that, I mean, that, that's where our businesses are, that and Highland Avenue. So.
Yeah, you need to open up all of the streets in Fredonia and just, and not allow Fredonia Avenue. Where, what you use to get to most of those streets of Fredonia.
Separating half the village.
Right.
Yeah, well, you can cross. You just can't ride that right now. Um, you, um, where do you want to continue east of that? East from Fredonia? Toward, you have an outlet going east or northwest or tell.
Nothing crossing fifty-seven, right?
Yes. So it would be something that would be.
Could you jump on Metal Lake Road? And then cross fifty-seven there and, and continue on. You're just having to establish any of those roads because we're a block in the middle. Yes. Okay. But I think it, I think it would be easier to, to go to the county and get them to put Fredonia Avenue on their list. That will solve a lot of your problems. I'm still gonna vote against this, but, no.
Come on, Don, we're almost there.
I'm representing a majority of the people in Fredonia who don't want ATVs in here. And there's a significant. Number of citizens that do want them in here. You know, but they're not a majority. The majority we'd rather not have put up with them in the village. And I'm representing them.
How do you, how do you know unless we take a referendum? I mean, I mean, I mean, you're hearing a lot of the complaints, cause that's. Against it, because that's what you're leaning towards. I mean, we'll, we will never really know until we take a referendum. I'm not sure we're gonna be doing that, so.
Well, tonight we're gonna look at an ordinance and decide whether or not we wanna. So.
What is the board's feeling on Fredonia Avenue after seeing Marshall Leach's? A, a presentation and everything that he provided, you know, with the history or data I mean.
I think it should be approved.
Does everybody feel as such? Does ordinance need to be changed at this point?
Yeah, if this, if this passes and it doesn't have that in there, that's a mistake.
I could, I, I concur with that. That's some deep thinking you got there, you know, voting against the, I mean, like this has to be.
It's gonna pass. I wanna make the best ordinance possible that's gonna pass, even though I don't think it's.
I think that's, but, I think that's very smart.
He's looking out for you guys.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions on this, uh, ordinance as it is right now? Or any other changes that we would wanna make?
So have we made any changes yet?
No.
So we're looking at Jonathan's draft, right? Is that the one that we're using as our template so far?
Does it say?
When I printed.
Is everybody good with the hours from eleven to five? Is that?
Yes.
Yes.
You think ten?
Marshall, do you, do you know what our quiet hours are?
Eleven, five to eleven, eleven to five.
So we basically shaped this right around of our quiet hours is what we did.
Yes.
Trust me, I hear lots outside my bedroom window, cause I'm on, I'm on Cedar Valley. So I hear it all.
I hear stuff at midnight to one o'clock.
Yes, exactly. I don't wanna add.
There are also ATVs going around the, the village right now, even though we don't have ordinance.
Right.
Law doesn't matter, so.
Yeah, consistent, all you guys roll signs. We deliver from Give's Bill till they support Softville, Philmore, Hoover. We see a lot. I need to be more violation than motorcycle. Very rarely, on top of all my drivers, I've been asking all my friends. Where do you think, majority in the board? And I just don't see. The UTVs or ATV on the road. Yeah, just hearing it tells me you guys are really afraid of all of this, because we have a group of fifty. You're not gonna see them. I haven't seen a road that's fast. And we deliver to these, all these areas.
Yeah.
Very rarely.
And again, I'm. I am, I hear ya, right? Yep.
I know you didn't, because it's been very morbid this, throughout my day. I'm on scanner for everything all the time involved with local players. I don't know if I've ever seen. Anybody else here? So we're all on scanner, right?
I don't know if we made it clear, but you're the owner of Bada Bing, right? I've only been in his community four years and I'm just learning, so I wanna make it clear. Yeah, oh yeah.
Speaking of where are our pizzas?
I'm no different.
I was saying, if you pass this, he's gonna deliver pizzas on the ATVs.
Give him a bigger tip.
Well, again. Yeah, I, again, I think, I think the idea is. To follow our noise ordinance. I think that's, that's a pretty typical. Timing, right? That are.
Yeah. And five o'clock in the morning was for farmers and hunters and people who wanted to get to their jobs. Uh, at eleven o'clock. That was the earliest number and that was stopped, most of them were going. Some even wanted around five, but most of them were active.
Yeah.
And we wanted to accommodate, so we. Just, once we had one at eleven o'clock, we tried to keep it. Lot easier than others.
I was just gonna say, I think if, if our surrounding municipalities. Have a similar timeframe, we should try and stick with them.
Right.
If you're gonna cross a road in an old. Village Fredonia is ten o'clock, it's ten oh two. I think you're gonna struggle with that.
I think people will just go anyway. I concur. All right. What else can we pick apart in this? Anything? Man, we could be here all night talking about it, but I wanna.
So the way it stands, the.
It's written in here.
So the way it stands, it doesn't have a driver's license requirement in there. You wanna add it to it, correct? I, I think we should.
Again, it's not enforceable.
But we just said that, but I heard from Don and. It was a pretty good point that. Just have it there as a deterrent. That way we don't have. You know. We make people, we make sure that people are being responsible. They said that you could, you could, uh, you could, uh, give them a municipal violation for that. They would take it to court. Let's say. Best case scenario, they pay it. Okay, they pay it. But if they don't pay it. And they lose in court, they would. Uh, uh, appeal it. And we say, no, then we wouldn't pursue it, but. I mean, I think the point is, is that we want it as a deterrent.
Yeah, I just. And I, I know exactly what you're saying, um.
Isn't that what you were saying, Don? Don? Isn't that what you were saying, that you were in favor of that? The driver's license requirement in there?
That sets us. By default, that sets an age limit. And then there's, uh, mom and dad and the boy is.
So you're not in favor of it?
He can't drive in.
So you're not in favor?
No, I don't think that should be in.
Okay. I guess I heard, I heard, uh, conflicting information from you then.
Yeah, I think Trusted Dura was just trying to clarify what Marshall Leach had said, that whatever you add to the ordinance, we could still write tickets as a municipal citation. Right? But if it gets any further, that's where we might get into legal, you know, gray area.
Okay.
There's something for regular automobiles that's covered. In that part of the statute. Can't be applied in this part of the statute. More or less, because then you're writing out a state violation. If we write out ordinance violations that aren't covered in the state. For ATV and UTV, we're writing an ordinance violation.
Yeah, I understand. It would be an ordinance violation.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what it is. Would remain an ordinance violation.
It would remain.
It wouldn't be state.
Yeah, I don't wanna cross that line.
Well, I mean, a lot of the traffic ordinances are. Are, uh, municipal. And mirror state laws. I just enforced a lot of them.
Do you look at, uh, the ordinance that the attorney? Propose there is no ordinance at all, coverage at all of, uh. Licenses or. Toxication and. There is. The one that you guys proposed, yes, it is. But it's not in the one that is enforceable.
Yeah, he's keeping a straight, pretty strict line in there.
But as far as the state statute allows law enforcement to. Enforce those types of violations, this ordinance would adopt that.
Yeah, so we can arrest him, but we can run him a team. That's the difference. And then they end up in our, in his department.
Right. That'd be a question I would think for. Marshall or the attorney or something like that. I don't, I don't know. I've never pulled anybody over in my life, nor would I want to.
I, I think, uh, after Leach's letter, it's, it leads us to the things that we should do. And doesn't include any of the things that we probably shouldn't do.
Are those in the ordinance? Is that what you're saying? That's presented?
Yeah, the Marshall, Marshall Leach is.
So, can I?
Yep.
Just ask. It seems like. The question is, should we add things that aren't enforceable above and beyond a municipal ordinance violation? Or should we not? And if the answer is, we shouldn't. Then the draft ordinance that Attorney Woodward has provided is the one that we moved forward with. If the answer is we should, then maybe we should start listing some of those things out, like driver's license or insurance requirements. Or helmets. Or any of the things that you guys feel would be appropriate. But I think the first question is, do, is anybody interested in adding? Things that we couldn't enforce beyond a municipal ordinance violation?
See, again, I don't think that that's, I don't think that's smart, cause it's. It's adding more things to something that have no teeth. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense for me. I mean.
Well, they've got teeth, because we can send them to, uh. The municipal court and, and the judge can ban gambling and they have to find.
No.
You know, it's, it doesn't have big teeth, but it's got enough teeth to be turd.
Again, I don't want.
Just, I think we should be similar.
Right, I agree.
To the other ordinance just in there.
And, and my specific point for that is otherwise, if you're having somebody that's coming from Hartford, coming all the way over here, what are you, you know, if they're all different, are you requiring them to keep a pocketbook of where they are? And what the ordinances are and stuff? Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kinda ridiculous.
I mean, to your point, they're gonna do it regardless.
No, no, I get it. Yeah.
You sound just like me, Rick.
Yeah, if you need to know fishing and hunting laws and stuff like that, you're gonna be there.
Well. That may be so, but that does not, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from, because I am a hunter and, and have a concealed carry permit as well. I'm just, I'm just saying that, that doesn't change my opinion of. Of that.
I mean, overall, my opinion is. ATVs want to be on the road that was designed for cars, they should be like ours with the same rules. And, uh, but then, but we're not there. The, the state has a lot of. In the meantime, we do have a separability clause if this gets out of hand. Uh, and this is really the only thing that might pull me over to, to a possibly dispel. Is that if things do get out again, which I don't expect any of you guys to have, and it's the idiots, I'm also a biker. I know about idiots on the road. So if there's too many idiots out there, we have the right to yank this. And that's the only, only thing. Pulling me over. That and a couple of statements I made last time, you know, like Diego Asamedo about, you know, not. You know, not worried about what hasn't happened. Yeah, or something like that. So I think we, you know. We got a chance like this.
Absolutely.
So. But in the meantime, wish the state would, uh. Get up to speed on things, uh, but we're not. I, I think as more of these ordinance that pass, um, I think, you know, get more visibility.
All right, are there any? I'm gonna ask one more time, are there any other changes? Otherwise, I think we're, um. We're just spinning wheels here. See what I did there? Unintentionally. I know. I'm tired, guys.
Sometimes you just can't resist.
I think we have the consensus.
All right.
So the consensus is I'm going to bring this exact ordinance back to you on the nineteenth?
Yes.
Did that change since last time we saw it?
The ordinance?
Yeah.
Well, it is, and do you know? I did. Leave some room in the. Agenda, which I can't find now.
No, you did. I know, that's why I read it and I said impossible action, so that's.
I get there. This is the second time you guys have seen this exact ordinance. It hasn't changed. Its agenda is the discussion and possible action. So it's possible you guys could take a vote tonight.
Yeah, I, I would concur. You, you haven't made any changes. Second, second time looking at this and you could have.
We, we've talked about this in three, four.
Yeah. Yep. Well, I obviously will entertain whatever the board would like to do.
I'd like to vote tonight. I'd like to make a motion to vote on. The ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four all terrain vehicles and utility terrain.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, I, do I dare?
Can I clarify? Are you gonna ask the same thing? I think, yeah.
Would you like that to be a motion to approve? Yes, I'm sorry.
Do I dare ask if there's any more discussion or deliberation? If not, I'll call the vote. Um, all those, should we do? Do a voiceful, sir?
It's up to the chair. If you want to ask for a roll call vote, you can.
Yeah, no, I think, um. Let's just take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Name.
Motion carries with one a. All right. Got some work to do. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, I'm consenting.
Yeah.
I know my people. It's a majority that doesn't want to sit down.
We'll give the room a minute to clear out if they'd wish and then.
Give a very spirited. Give a very spirited dissent, Don.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, you're good. All right. Next, we are going to move on, um, looking at a motion to approve 2025 CIP list as recommended by Finance Committee. Uh, Rick, do you want to speak to it? Do you want Chris to speak to it? Do you want me to speak to it?
Chris is very intimate with this, so.
So you would like me to be intimate, is that? Um, so yes, the Finance Committee reviewed this list. Again, for those that have not seen this, the way that we, uh, look at all these many columns and and bubbles filled in, on the left side, you have project descriptions followed by departments and then the estimated cost, where the funds are allocated. And then after that, it's the years that are broken out. So you see 2024, which is the year that we're in. You see the bu, the projects where we borrowed for, the projects that we're paying cash on hand, and then what the actuals are starting to look like as of this year. The only thing that you guys are approving tonight is 2025's CIP projects. Anything beyond 2025 is just a wishlist, right? You keep adding things to this, brainstorming ways to pay for it as time goes on. Um, so I won't go in as much detail as I did in the finance meeting, but I'll give a quick summary here. So you see under the, uh, general, general fund borrowed items, we have a GMC 3,500 mini dump that you have already ordered, by the way. Uh, a fire command vehicle six five six, uh, the marshal's office roof, a pickup with plow, that's another one that you guys have already ordered. Um, and then I'll stop here on the fire ambulance. So if you remember, we originally had a hundred thousand dollars that we had set aside and borrowed dollars for the build out of the fire station for the paramedics, so that they had a place to sleep. Now that that is getting funded through the paramedic program itself, that freed up a hundred K of general fund dollars to get allocated towards something. Uh, we are very well aware that a ambulance replacement is going to be in the near future. So we proposed taking a hundred K as the seed money to start funding that ambulance. Uh, this will be followed by a future year as again, a continual cash investment. So that way, by the time we're ready to buy, buy an ambulance, we have most of those dollars ready to go. Um, continuing on down that list, then you have the, uh, sewer, sewer jetter, uh, I'm sorry, no, I'm on Wenzel paving. Uh, Wenzel paving to Marie Kraus. So this is another item that we talked about at the finance meeting that we wanted to find some way to pave Wenzel. For those who don't know, it's currently a gravel road that leads, leads to one of our most popular parks. Um, so there's a mix of dollars here that are getting allocated. We have two different cycles worth of what's called L R I P dollars. It's eighteen thousand dollars each that need to get allocated towards a project. Um, so we're, we're proposing combining those dollars for, for that. Again, we've already been awarded those dollars. They just have to be assigned to a project. Um, eighteen of that thirty-six thousand needs to get used by June of next year. Um, so as I've shared with the Finance Committee, assuming that you guys say yes, we'll work on bidding out this project, um, this fall, this eve, this, uh, winter. So that way, not only can we get competitive bids, but then we also can get it done by the time that we need to use that L R I P dollars. So in addition to the thirty-six, you see other amounts. So we currently have one seventy-five that, uh, we had borrowed and then additional, uh, amount of dollars. Most of that is from the culvert project. So if you remember, we had a couple of years' worth of savings, saving for culvert. The board, uh, decided to not take action on replacing that culvert in lieu of going after state grant dollars. So again, that freed up those dollars to be used towards, towards some sort of public infrastructure project. So all those dollars combined together gets you the amount of two hundred and eighty-six thousand for paving Wenzel. Uh, I'll emphasize that it's just paving. Utilities underneath are fine. As Trusty Doorward had, had mentioned before, this would be more of a rural road, not having curb and gutter, unless a developer were to fall out of the sky, right, and want to build residential lots. Um, but assuming not, then it's just, uh, laying a fresh amount of pavement, going from, uh, that corner there up the road and then to the parking lot, and ideally, if we had enough money, paving that parking lot too. So that way, not only will we have a brand new splash pad, but then we'll have the paved, um, entryway and parking lot for those residents as well.
Chris, I'm gonna stop you real quick right there. Um, I just want to chat real quickly. When you say that those eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars need to be used by June.
Yep.
Can that? Yeah, correct. I'm just wondering, I'm thinking about, that is the absolute busiest time of the year for that park. So I don't know if it's something that can be used for planning and plan to do it in the fall or something like that. Plus, if we got a splash pad under construction, it's really gonna be a mess down there. Um, so again, I don't know if that, if that can be used towards some aspect of the project that's not that invasive at that time. Just a question, just something I thought about with softball and soccer and everything else going on down there to rip up a road and, uh, well, actually to start paving a road is just gonna throw a whole nother wrench into things.
I think that's your only real project gap for the year.
Yeah, that's, they'll leave.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm just saying after the end of June would be one.
Try and get it done in spring. Once the ground stabilizes and whatever.
Right.
So that it'll be done before July, July first is your next step.
Right, but what I'm getting at is, is between the end of May and, or, well, middle of May to like middle of July is like right when that is used a ton, because you've got soccer that rolls right into softball as well. So it, it'll just be a master, you shake it. And Little League uses, yeah, uses that too. So I would almost, I would almost want to complete that project in the fall somehow, when there's not as much or, yeah, August, something like that.
Yeah, and once we have a contractor, obviously we can talk about that scheduling and I'm sure there's gonna be money spent in spring.
Or something that I'm getting at. Do, do you understand what I'm saying as far as you go? I just don't want to get into a situation where we're having a huge headache down. Yep. Again, I was just thought, thinking about the eighteen thousand dollars, so I apologize.
All good. All right, so that's, is that project. Uh, then you have the sewer jetter trailer. The only change is that originally, uh, Director Paulus had asked for a full truck. Um, the concession that he made and the Finance Committee made was to, to, uh, whittle that down to some sort of trailer. So he's currently investigating what that would look like, assuming that you guys approved that, that change. Um, then you look on the cash side. So again, this is cash on hand, where we were earmarked in our budget to spend dollars that we already have. Um, we are finishing out the cameras at the Fire Department, Village Hall, DPW, and the Marshal's Office, so that project will get finished up. We have accessories for the vent track. We have, uh, crack filling and resurfacing of the Marie Kraus footpath out there as well. It's about time that we do that. And then we have a replacement of a John Deere, um, uh, both snow blower and mower that is shared between both the Streets Department and the Sewer. That's why you see that cost split between the two funds. Um, and then moving further down, you see a new trash pump. You see a water tower receiver and then a, a small utility project, um, and Director Paulus isn't here to share it. But there is a backup, uh, the laterals and water pipes that are around Milwaukee Street there. We originally floated that while, while we had contractors here in town, that we were gonna try and get that project done using using dollars that we had allocated for Highland. Being that Highland dollars are pretty much used up, then this was just added to the CIP as an item for, for next year. And so you see that getting planned as well. So everything in that kind of bolded black box is the CIP projects that, um, again, we settled on with Finance Committee. Um, they approved, uh, recommended to you guys unanimously, and that was before you for approval as well.
All right, are there any questions on the CIP list that was recommended by the Finance Committee? If not, we are doing that. All right, I have a motion and I have a second. Are there any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve business park expansion contract one dash twenty twenty-four, change order number one.
I think Isaac is on the.
Oh, good. Okay, excellent.
I can't see, I, yes.
You stuck around.
Everyone.
Uh, to revise the contract milestone one completion date to October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, uh, I mean, he could speak to this if he wants to, but I don't think that there's any secret that whether it's been a pain in the butt this spring, um, in our original deadline, which was.
September first was the original milestone completion date.
Yeah, um, has, has passed and they are diligently working to get everything done. They've been working on weekends. They've been working late into the night, so they are, uh, trying to get this completed. So we would need a motion to approve that contract, uh, change order.
They're working nights and weekends and that costing us extra money.
So there's no cost. Yeah, there's no cost change in this change order.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Any other questions or concerns? Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have a motion to approve Highland Drive reconstruction contract two twenty twenty-four, change order number one, revised contract price to include water main, sanitary sewer and storm sewer additions and quantity adjustments. This I would like, uh, somebody to talk to.
Can I, can I speak to something? It, um, I noticed that people are kind of, I have a loud voice, but some people are kind of droning off. And they're not speaking up in the microphone. I can't hear you, especially you, Dan. You're kind of, so if you could speak.
You got it.
So I can hear him.
Yep. Uh, so again.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. We're looking for a motion to approve that, uh, change order for revising a contract price to include water main, sanitary sewer and storm sewer additions and quantity adjustments. Um, and again, if either Isaac or, uh, Chris could speak to this, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll let Isaac give a brief summary here.
Sure. Yeah, so this is the majority of utility installation quantity adjustments. A number of these are just kind of squaring up with contractor actually installed versus what the bid item was. For instance, that item one A, that twelve inch, um, you know, we have thirty feet in the bid and I'm needing to install thirty-five to actually complete the work properly. So a number of those are smaller items are related to that. Um, some of these other items, though, I don't know if Eric is in the room, um, but they were, came up during construction as either items that we thought we should probably address while contractor was in town. Or, um, for instance, at the south end of the project limits, there was a break that happened between when the project was bid and when construction actually, actually started. Um, so to address some of those items, um, additional work was added to the scope of the project. Um, so that's where some of this additional ten inch comes from, some of the additional, I'd like item one C, some of the additional six inch PVC, um. So those are some of those items there. Um, there's also three laterals, uh, both water and sanitary that were added to the project. Two of those were two vacant lots. Um, so as I understand, and Chrissy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the village is going to backcharge property owners for those. Um, so item one E, two of those three will be backcharged as far as I'm aware of. Um, same with, um, looking at item one I, I believe both of, all of that should be backcharged or majority of that would be backcharged to property owners and looking here for the water service item, but it must be missing. It should be on here. Though item one D, I believe a portion of that is gonna end up being backcharged to those residents as well. Um, that's kind of a brief summary here of what's been added to date. Um, yeah, I guess, are there any questions about that? Otherwise, I could kind of step through each item. I don't know if that'd be preferred.
So just like in any construction project, right, there's things that happen, things that come up, and I think that's where we are with this. Um, I know that I was there for a couple of the different things that came up and the solutions that we decided to uh, pursue, I guess you could say, were the most cost effective and the most necessary that we needed to do. So within the scope of the project.
Yeah, it's a nice summary, Dan.
One O, what that one is.
Isaac, can you explain one O, please?
Oh, sure. Um, so that came up during the pre-construction conference, um, both Chris and Eric. Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Um, that came up during the pre-construction conference. So Chris and Eric were both in attendance there. Um, contractor requested, uh, in order to more clearly identify where sanitary laterals were located, uh, to bring in Great Lakes TV and SEAL, um, which I know they've done a lot of work in the village before. But they requested to bring them in and basically shoot up each lateral to locate and specifically identify where those laterals were actually located. Uh, during design, all that information was essentially based on, um, the televising of the main and GIS information, which kind of have to take with a grain of salt. Uh, so they had some concerns about that at the start, so the village agreed, or Chris and Eric agreed to to split that cost with the contractor. So contractor paid for half of it, village paid for the other half. As it was kind of a, a, one of the bigger unknowns going into the project.
You want to maybe just give us a recap, Chris, of where we are budget wise with this project?
Sure, yeah, I think I touched on a little bit last meeting. So we, uh, after the award of the bid and plus the engineering costs, we have about a hundred, we had about a hundred K of wiggle room. Um, so this will take, uh, a chunk of that, and then there'll be a future change order for the work that you've seen along Regal. Uh, that's a whole other story for the next meeting, um, that would, would use up the rest of that. So we don't foresee any other major change orders unless Isaac wants to correct me. I mean, curb and gutter work's going on, uh, now. And then followed by the paving, so we should be just finishing it up here and we'll be right on budget.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, Chris. I don't think I have anything up. I'll say it to that.
Say it again.
Bro, it, it looks, sounds like about, was about eighteen, nineteen thousand or so is gonna be charged back to the, uh, property owners at some point. I think that was Isaac said for the.
Of the vacant lot?
Yeah, the, the vacant lot laterals and anytime that we're helping directly a property owner that's there, then yes, there's a charge.
Yeah, I don't have the number on hands, but I think that sounds about right. I was thinking roughly seven or eight thousand per property owner there between the sanitary and the water service.
Yep. This might be a goofy question, but did we, did we talk to the owner of that property and let them know? Okay. Figured as much, I just, you know, surprise. Any other questions on that? Wanna move on, on that?
May we wish to approve, uh, change order number one?
Second.
Isn't change order number two?
Uh, it's change, it's change order number one for Highland. The other, yeah. All right, I have a motion and I have a second, correct?
Yes.
All right.
I say it again.
I will call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, then next we have a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to State Statute nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation dead of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, uh, for the village administrator's annual evaluation. All right, I have a motion, a second. We'll call the roll starting by trustee Iber. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries unanimously, and, um, I don't know that we need you to come back or anything like that. We'll just discuss.
I'll hang out in case you.
Okay, one. Okay, one. All right, it is nine eleven, we are back in open session. Uh, there is no action. On the closed session items. Correct?
Yeah.
All right, correspondence, we do have something, and I have to pull it up. What do we got?
There's two.
Yeah.
Uh, the Midmarine Legislative Committee is meeting on September eleventh, and then the Association Dinner is on September twenty fifth. Anybody who'd like to attend, please let me know. Don, I have you.
Oh crap, I just fixed up the board meeting.
Um.
Yeah, I don't know if I'll be able to bring back the information they're gonna provide as concisely and as, uh. As good as it's gonna be, there's a couple of really good individuals. Um. And, yeah, men from the Wisconsin Association of School Board Officials and Andrew Sarno. Um, from the Assistant Superintendent of Business. Um, and they're gonna deal with education funding and uh, how it works in our schools and how the state figures out the different funds and how it works against. Um, schools that are small and schools that are losing students. And whatever, so there's gonna be a lot of information passed. Hopefully, there's uh, handouts. And stuff that I could bring. With information on there, we can, and can make a set of handouts for everybody to look at. But I mean, that's a situation that our school decisions are. Not the losing children, but the, the loss of, of money and stuff. So. I would urge everybody, if they have time and are interested, stop them and.
Yeah. I'm going to try to clear my schedule for that one. So I'll let you know.
For the Legislative Committee?
January.
Uh, for both.
Okay.
So I'll see what I can do.
There's some good food at the dinner meeting.
Other than goat cheese, who likes goat cheese?
I do, I do.
You like everything.
Oh. I was. I'm from a goat, can't be that good. All right, anything?
It's probably really rich.
We need to mention anything about the email we got today. This afternoon.
I don't believe so. Um. It's not engendized.
Wasn't sure if that was considered correspondence. Maybe next time.
Mm hmm, I think next time we'll go over that. Any items for future consideration?
I just wanted to, if I may.
You may.
Point out the two paramedic, um. Informational. Documents. Um, the informational flyer is going out next week. Um, and the frequently asked questions, um, is posted on our website, um, on many different pages. Um, so we've kind of actively started, um, our, our marketing campaign. Our informational marketing campaign.
Excellent.
Um, I just realized that I'm the only one that got that email. You guys didn't. I thought it went to the whole board. Oh, I, no, I got an email from a citizen today regarding the ATV proposed ordinance. That's the email I was talking about.
Oh.
I thought the whole board.
I thought you were talking about something else.
Everybody else thought it was too. No, I received an email this afternoon, uh. Do you want me to read it out loud or? Forward it to you all so you can read it?
Oh.
They're lying or whatever.
I mean, it's. Upon reviewing the village meeting with the proposal of the ATV village in the village, I noticed inaccuracies. The village attorney referenced bold, the purpose of bold outdoor activities is to give blind and visually impaired participants the opportunity. To experience outdoor sports and leisure activities in their habitat. Bold activities include the bold motorcycle run, alpine and cross-country skiing, tandem bike races, ice skating, snow tubing, golf, and even a trip to the Milwaukee Zoo. Activities are in their habitat. The all-terrain vehicle riding would be riding an ATV on outdoor trails, not paved streets. Note, bold does not offer ATV riding as an activity. On another subject of concern while discussing EMS funding, at the same village board meeting, the question was asked, what happened to all the money? I asked, how is the administrator being held accountable for spending existing money previously and now? From an excessive loan of four million he took out on behalf of the village. This is according to the village board meetings. This email. Is for your reference only from a concerned taxpayer. Thank you for your time.
Hmm.
I apologize, I actually thought it went to the whole board.
Well, it sounds like, right. Well, that's a decision that doesn't really enter fast rate. And they're complaining about us not making it clear enough or whatever.
Well, I just, you know, again, I guess I would respond and, and just say if you, if you need more clarity on information, or if you want to forward it to me, or whatever, that's fine too, and. We can get you the facts and everything that you need, any more information you could, you're looking for. That's how I would approach it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else? Can we leave?
Adjournment.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries at nine seventeen PM. Thank you, everybody, for during another long one.
Oh, we've been there. Yeah, considering we got here at three or six.